This meeting of Starkville Board of Alderman will now come to order. Please, Robinson, with the saying of pledge allegiance, Happy Way to Alderman Mayor, and Black Dog, with his own word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Mayor will yield his word of prayer to Pastor Carter. And after Pastor Carter's prayer, we'll observe movement. That is fresh.
Good morning, Father. We come now down to the foreland, God. We thank you for your goodness and mercy that we do a favor. And, Father, God, we uplift this one for sin, to sit us down. And, God, we thank you for all our officials, we thank you for our man, our vice man, all our audience, all the administration. And, God, we pray over this agenda that everything that's going to be done will be done in decent and in order. God, we thank you for your divine protection, and we thank you to us for all of our department heads just allowing them to be servants and to be supporters of the people's story. Now, God, we pray that you do grant the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that you do yourself pray to will. And, God, we pray for those who protect, those who serve, and those who support our community. And, God, we're still mindful, through us on the slave officers, lieutenant dean, and also officer tape, that you continue to be with their families and their loved ones. God, we love you, we thank you, and so all of us in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, you have before you a copy of the written agenda. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
You may. Under the Finance Administration, item number four. I would like to add to that, item ten has presented at the table, but they have not been presented at the table.
All right, the proposed revision from Alderman Mayor will leave item 11E4 to read as follows. The approval of a budget number one for fiscal year 2015 has presented as the table. Alderman Mayor, is that your proposed revision?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear any objection? Any objection? An objection? An objection saying no, Alderman, we have heard the proposed revision.
No.
All right, is there any further proposed revision from the members of the board? Alderman.
On page six, under utilities, Mr. Kemp has requested that an item be added to the agenda. That's eleven I under utility. We request approval to purchase PVC water and sewer pipe from Southern Pipe, the submitter of the lowest quote, in the amount of $15,788 to replace faulty pipes in unscale strip required to scale overall. Unless I affect you from saying?
All right, the proposed revision from Alderman Wind is to add the following item to the regular agenda and the consent agenda. It is approval of purchase of PVC water and sewer pipe from Southern Pipe, the submitter of the lowest quote, in the amount of $14,788 to replace faulty pipes on scale strip. Alderman, is that your proposed revision?
Yes, it is.
Do I hear any objection? Any objection? An objection? An objection saying none? Please note the change. All right, Alderman. Sorry.
Okay, item 11K on page six, under sanitation card. Please note the effect, change of information regarding the contract amendment that has been provided to us by Board Attorney.
Would you like to revise that to read as presented at the table?
Yes.
All right, so the proposed revision from Alderman Wind is to revise item 11K1 to read as follows. The approval of a contract with Hesper Concrete passed as presented at the table. Alderman, is that your proposed revision?
Yes, it is.
Do I hear any objection? An objection? An objection? An objection saying none? Please note the change. Alderman, do you have any further proposed revision?
Item 11B2A, unless I affect you from saying?
Is that?
The sum of planning?
Item 11B2A under planning?
Yes.
All right, the proposed revision from Alderman Wind is to add item 11B2A, the approval to begin ordinance changing procedures and hearings for a change of Starkville, Mississippi Code Ordnances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article five, Planning and Zoning Commission, Section 21, thirty-one, thirty-nine, Terms of Office, or Section 21 dash one twenty-nine, Terms of Office, to the consent agenda. Alderman, is that your proposed revision?
Yes, it is.
Do I hear any objection? Do I hear any objection? Any objection? An objection saying none? That matter's been added. Alderman, do you have any further proposed revision?
Yes, item G, page four.
All right, proposed revision from Alderman Wind is to add item 11B2G, which reads as follows. Approval for staff to begin ordinance change procedures and hearings for a change of Starkville, Mississippi Code Ordnances, Appendix A, zoning, Article nine, signage, Section C and D, to the consent agenda. Alderman, is that your proposed revision?
It is.
Do I hear any objection? Any objection? An objection? An objection saying none? That matter's been added. Consent agenda, Alderman, do you have further?
Yes, and my last final is 11P. Actually, the question for that to be placed on consent.
All right, proposed revision from Alderman Wind is to add item 11B2F to consent agenda. I see the city attorney's asking if you'd recognize, Mr. Leibman.
Lord, I just wanted to go to consider something on this item. Moratoriums are allowed under the law. They must be narrowly tailored as to subject matter and narrowly tailored as to time. The Attorney General is also upon it, they must be done by ordinance. Now, no case or state statute says that they must be done by ordinance, but if you follow the AG's opinion, you would have to set the moratorium up through the ordinance process and two public hearings. You've just now set the wheels in motion to change the ordinance anyway, so it may be duplicative to go through the ordinance steps for a moratorium, and then you're going to have a new ordinance that takes care of the issue in 30 days.
Okay.
So just wanted to raise that issue for Court's consideration.
And I don't think they're yet ready to consider the ordinance, or what they've got in their package, if they've got a sample that's been provided by the community development staff. I would recommend you take some time to chew on the sample and determine if that's the right fit before you call your first public hearing on it. To that end, I don't think a moratorium is a bad idea until you've decided how you want to tail that ordinance.
But that doesn't change the fact that it has to be done by ordinance, and currently there was no ordinance before the board to issue a moratorium.
Mayor, may I recognize? You may. So, let's make sure we're clear, so before we do a moratorium, let the other board?
That's what the Attorney General says.
Right, and then ordinance, court, to a new, they have two public hearings.
Correct.
So you're saying it's going to move now to the next, this item here, that's on the agenda, per the Attorney General?
If the public hearing were coming forward in the next meetings on the changing of the ultimate ordinance, the signed ordinance, then it would be kind of silly to have another ordinance to do a moratorium to change the underlying ordinance. If the underlying ordinance is already being changed.
So if we're to follow the Attorney General's opinion, what are you recommending to the board?
We have, we have two options. If the board wanted to proceed under a moratorium, then they would need to bring forward an ordinance or public hearing the next rate of the meeting.
The next option?
The next option would be to scratch out of that.
Mayor, I think it'd be best for what the Attorney General's discretion, give his explanation. And, Mr. Attorney, you agree, I mean, just about your plan here, that we need to follow the Attorney General's opinion, and we've got to have, you know, the public hearing, and otherwise we're not ready to consider it, to scratch it.
Correct. We're going to see, of course, if the board follows the AG's opinion and the board actions can be questioned.
I would recommend calling a public hearing to consider a moratorium, ordinance. Now, we do a moratorium, ordinance for a period of six months or a year, and come back either before or at the end of that period and adopt the actual ordinance that would regulate the activity. But I do think that you probably want to take some time in crafting the ordinance and in discussion with the community development staff. This is a trend that they're starting to see develop, so I think it's worthwhile, as you consider how you want to craft that ordinance, to put a moratorium in place so that you don't have existing conditions that are in conflict with the ordinance once you pass. Alderman.
At this time, I would kind of recommend that my recommendation is that we just take it off of the agenda.
All right, so the proposed revision from Alderman Wind is to remove item 11B2F from the agenda, and that matter is a request for approval of a moratorium on non-seasonal decorative lighting for a period of one year or until a suitable ordinance is in place. Alderman, is that your proposed revision? Do I hear any objection? An objection? An objection? An objection saying none? That matter's been removed from the agenda. Alderman, do you have further proposed revision?
I don't.
Any further proposed revision from the members of the board? Alderman.
Item 11page four, I asked you to say on this item. Not to say that there's not a legal thing, we've got the Fox Advisory Commission, and we've just asked, passed for court diligently, and regulations in the hot dust, late June or the July, and it would just go out and make a big expenditure, and I'd like to hear a lot of the other pressing needs of the elected decision. That's what we've got to do.
Proposed revision from Alderman Little is to remove item 11A2 from the agenda, and that matter is a request for approval to design and build restrooms and conduct other light improvements at the Dale King Park and Splash Pad. The historical shall act as the general contractor for this request. The funding shall be an appropriation of two percent park improvement revenue in an amount not to exceed $55,000. Alderman Little, is that your proposed revision? Do I hear any objection? Any objection? An objection? An objection saying none? That matter's been removed from the agenda. Alderman Little, do you have any further proposed revision?
Yes, sir, Lord.
Any further proposed revision from the members of the board? Alderman Carter.
On the board business, item 10B. If you really didn't have any separate matter to it, I'm wondering if, through passing the city attorney, if we adopt this tonight, or also if we're going to adopt some of the reports written. And really, why would that brought about? What the intent, or who put that on the agenda, and what's the intent of that?
I can't answer who put it on the agenda.
I believe Alderman Wind put on the agenda. Alderman, would you like to speak to the intent and what you're trying to accomplish?
That is, item 10B. Alderman Carter, without going into the details of it, it involves the use of city vehicles that were used improperly by city employees on more than one occasion in the last month.
The way that it's written, it's considered as developing and adopting, so if we approve this tonight, does that also include any adoption that makes sense with that?
We, CAO, I'll let you speak to that, since you and Mr. Board will be steering ahead of that.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. From what I understand, we have a defined vehicle use policy, and so as it relates to this, as we, as we work through this, what Randy and I discussed is developing what's laid out here, which is a guideline, which is more a practice that departments will follow to more, sort of, I suppose, internally manage something closer to what we've heard the board ask for. And so what we're looking for here is, is just that, it's the, it's the authority to put together a practice, because we have a policy statement. And so this is just something that we would use at the departmental level for sign out of vehicles and closer maintenance and strict adherence that would be consistent with, perhaps more than the policy that you've already agreed to or already adopted.
I guess my question, the city attorney, the way you're reading this, does this need to be brought, if we approve this tonight, does this, this does not, if the way I'm reading is correct, or not, if we brought the board to approve again?
Correct. Word adoption would mean that whatever guideline, accountability guideline is in place, will be adopted tonight, whatever that is.
Well, then, I'm, I'm going to pass this, we brought up a sentence, just to, unless you, unless we were, because the way it is now, it's, you know, of course, I'm not going to go on something I don't know what's written yet, so.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Hold on, so Alderman Carver, or you were removing that item from the consent agenda? Item 10B is going to remove from the consent agenda. Alderman.
Thank you, Alderman Carver. CAO, we provide the board with the information that they'll need, so the next time this is put on the agenda, they'll have their information in hand.
Sure. Now, as it stands, you've still got a matter on the agenda, but it's not on the consent agenda. Do you wish to hold the matter off of the agenda or leave it on for discussion?
Let's forehand it.
All right, proposed revision from Alderman Wind is to remove item 10B from the agenda.
And the vice mayor wants to recognize, we're saying that.
All right, Alderman Wind, is that your proposed revision? Do I hear any objection?
No, no objection, I saw you written.
All right, let me get through, ask him for objections, and then I'll recognize you. An objection? An objection? An objection saying none? That matter's removed from the agenda. Alderman.
Basically, Mayor, I was going to shorten the discussion, I was going to suggest that we remove it from the agenda, this entire agenda, and bring it back once the proposed guidelines is developed. We do not necessarily have the authority, or, you know, Alderman, we want to develop any guidelines, but considering it's friendly coming, but we're just, long story short, I'm going to say that let's just remove it from the agenda once it's developed. Now, I see the gentleman wants concerns, here we can just get on the agenda tonight, then we can consider it and report to the mayor, so.
This is Alderman. Thank you, Mayor. Alderman.
I will discuss this when the time is proper, but any time a city vehicle is being used by an employee, and it is being used improperly, and a report is made, it should not take us three hours, two and a half to three hours to find out who is in possession of that car, so we have got to do something to address these concerns that has occurred two times in the last month, and those are just the ones that we know about. How do you approach this?
Further proposed revision? Are there any further proposed revisions to the agenda? Any further proposed revision? Saying none, most of the agenda is revised, it's in a works, most has been made, Alderman Little, to approve the agenda is revised, do I hear second?
Second.
Most have been seconded, Alderman, Alderman Little, do you want to speak on the merits? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? Officer Perry, please, you can probably say aye. Officer Post, please, you can probably say nay. Mr. Quill, the passage you now have before you, the consent agenda for your approval, is there any objection to the approval? The consent agenda is revised. An objection? An objection? An objection saying none? The consent agenda is revised, has been approved. The next matter that you have before you is announcements and comments by the members of the board. I have one comment, and that is to introduce our two newest employees, two new police officers. First is my privilege to introduce Officer Timothy Chisholm. Timothy is originally from Detroit, Michigan, and is a graduate of Alcorn Central High School in Corinth, Mississippi. After graduation, Timothy continued his education at Northeast Mississippi Community College and majored in criminal justice. Before joining the Starkville Police Department, Timothy was a corrections officer for the Mississippi Department of Corrections. Timothy is the son of Robert and Janet Chisholm, and has two brothers and one sister. During his free time, Timothy enjoys spending time with his wife, Dani, as well as our outdoor activities such as fishing, swimming, and camping. Please join me in welcoming Officer Timothy. I'd now like to introduce Officer Dante Thomas. Dante is originally from Jackson, Mississippi, and attended Mura High School. He's a graduate of Mississippi State University with a bachelor's degree in criminology. Previously, Dante was a security guard for Cobra Security. Dante is the son of Rita Washington and Donald Thomas, an investigator with the Belmont, he was previously an investigator with the Belmont Police Department. Dante has two sisters, Shameka and Leona. During his spare time, Dante enjoys weight training and playing with his dog, Bo. Dante attends Second Baptist Church. Please will join me in welcoming Officer Thomas. And that concludes my comments this evening. Are there any comments? Public members of the board. Alderman.
I have one that I'd like to make tonight, and it's actually, it's one of my peers here, the board, is actually the vice mayor. About two weeks ago, Ms. Beal went into the office of the vice mayor, and she desperately needed his assistance with navigating her through the crisis that she had as it related to her utility bill, and Mrs. Beal's life was actually turned off because of the existing life form that she had. And she actually has a little two-year-old ranch house that was out back at home, and who is actually, I mean, I'm familiar with things. The vice mayor was able to assist her with that, and I just want to thank him for taking his time out of his schedule to assist his vehicle, as she was with Larry's and that. So, vice mayor, I said, thank you so much for what you did. She's not in the war, but she reached out to you because she was trying to get something up her back. So I just want to say thank you for doing that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. It's where I look for.
Any further comments, members of the board? Alderman Carter.
I really should introduce this one, but we were out of town this weekend in Mr. Worcester, procession of Officer Tate, you know, and I guess to the social media sites and the way that Mississippi stood up, and just statewide, I was quite impressed, and I think the nation as a whole would do justice to look at the South and see the way we respect our officers and firemen, and I think that the Fire Department came out, and I saw the flag you hung, and I respect you for doing that, and I respect Officer Nichols, or Chief Nichols, for getting everybody out, and the way that you handled yourself, and it was pretty cool to watch that. Thank you.
Further comments, members of the board? You may.
Gentlemen, I want to thank you for those very great words there about the events this past weekend. I was not going to say anything, but let me just add to that very briefly. I want to thank our police chief, his entire staff, the Starkville Fire Department, and all of other participants who were involved with the procession of the fallen Officer Tate, who was killed in the line of duty in Hattler, Mississippi. That procession alacrity and the burial of great sides services were very emotional. It was a very high moment. The citizens of Starkville and others gathered in our great city, showed, and exemplified great support, they exemplified great patriotism. You witnessed the waving of the flags, the taking in of the moment. People who were present with great anticipation of just being a part of showing whatever support they could, the part that I would just, I mean, people who were involved in the procession from the point of, I mean, witnessing it from the point of the field of garden, traveling south, across 182, going under the University Drive Bridge, the officers from, from every city, town, municipality, or state, as you can see, were there. Once you approached the intersection of Spring Street and Highway 12, our officers were on duty. You could not have expected them to do anything any better. I mean, like, everything would be completely perfect. Once you got to the intersection, the officers had properly blocked the traffic, the citizens and others stood there in that major highway as the traffic turned left off of 12, facing west onto Spring Street. The people stood and waved. The entire city of Starkville was represented. The scene and appearance was representative of our great state, and it was a moment. The two motorcycle officers led the procession down to the Black Black, and as you traveled that lane, all people in the residential areas just stood there. They had similar appearances, you know, the officers, the city of Hattler, the mayor of Hattler, our mayor. The mayor had a proclamation for the city of Starkville and the graveside, they salute and everything, so you could not have expected Starkville to be representing any better. It was a very, very emotional situation. It just was, once you got rolling in that procession, it just took the moment of having been there. So I told our chief, who was staff, who was president in Hattler, the staff came back in Hattler, Lieutenant Ward, who just left, understand, he either went to Hattler or wasn't there in Lauderdale. And they have a system of countywide communication, you just have to hear it as you unfold, that countywide system, it allows every, the law enforcement officers to know every single activity that takes place, and you can rest assured they know how to do it effectively. So that was well done. Chief and his staff just deserved the finest of any recognition that can be bestowed upon them. So we must appreciate them at all times for the work that they do, and not giving you any hearsay of this, what I personally would, and I am so thankful that I had opportunity to represent the city in my capacity as vice mayor, and to be with the mayor, who did, I must say, a great job in representing the city at that occasion, our chief did a great job, and all others who were there. So we just want to thank the city of Starkville for coming out and showing great, high support to the fallen officer. It was a great level of support, the everybody who was here, they did what they could do. So, Mayor, I just wanted to say those things, and we just certainly appreciate everybody for their involvement. Gentlemen, I want to thank you for bringing that up, because I was not going to take this time and just articulate this to further, but I just want to thank you for bringing it up. And once you brought it up, I would have been, this is my assignment to give advice, maybe I could say those things. So whenever you see in our offices, you just always just tell them thank you, and I'm not saying this just to take time, but I'm saying because this is just a genuine thing to do, because they deserve this convention. So, Mayor, I just want to say that, and I want to thank you very much. Thank you.
Further comments from the members of the board? Any further comments from the members of the board? Any further comments? Saying none, will now move to citizen comments. At this time, any citizen wishing to make comments may do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Evan Weller, part of the Mary Newcastle, and I like to paint and choose notebooks, and just look for taking that service and sit with us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Weller. It means a lot that you came after the school year, so. We usually get a flurry of activity as everybody's trying to meet their requirements right before graduation, but there was nothing that said you had to come tonight, so we appreciate you coming to represent the Mayor U. G.
I'm here to the mayor, Lord, my name is Albert Dunbar Seven, to fight the mayor of Berkeley. And I should all the voice. Dr. Brand, he thinks highly of his members, myself, chief, also, but we do not want anything to happen to me. Since I would like for the clergy to try and take a bold statement against agitators that have declared war on the police department. And we have, the lady getting mad when they start burning the cars and stuff. I ain't respect, but we would just like to get a clear understanding that everybody understands everybody. For the fake chief, affect me, for the fake me affect chief, like brothers. But we cannot seriously protect when we have agitators, people that hate, they want to declare war on the people that try and show. Also, it's getting hot, we would like to get some inside on, put overload, start a fire, so that we can kind of be safe after it gets hot. so that we can kind of be safe after it gets hot.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Further citizen comments?
Good evening, Mayor. Lord Members. My name is Chris Taylor from Wall 7. I have a few things here that have been bothering me. You know, one time Dan Marlin said that this was the most unfriendly city for business to open. I want to add to that also to certain citizens. Everyone can't afford a house. Seventy-year-old woman requested a house, I mean, a trailer. I live in that neighborhood. That trailer would have looked beautiful over there. So I need y'all to rethink that, especially when you've got a planning and zoning commission that approved stuff around here with conditions, if she would have met them, which she would have. So we talking about planning and zoning, changing ordinance, think about what they're going to do to the citizen and to business. Okay, y'all, let me see. Now, if I came up here with a lawyer, ninety-nine percent of the time, it'd get approved. I wouldn't go against that. You know, everyone can't afford a lawyer to come in here to represent them. And every time we do that, we losing tax money. And when we do that, you know, we talking about cleaning up this city? We still have livestock. We got cattle over there on 182, city limit. We got trailer parks down 25. It's all over the city. Certain areas, just like Alderman, we in say, she would not put a trailer. She wouldn't, I wouldn't even recommend a trailer in certain places. But then, certain places you can. I got about one more minute. I could go on and on, but I won't. I want to leave something with you. Walmart as of thirty April, minimum wage is nine dollars. As of next year, minimum wage for Walmart next April is ten dollars. So y'all think about how many employees we got, the sanitation workers, the street workers and everybody else. They gonna need that money. One minute? Yeah. No one mentioned about the police boss. I haven't heard nothing. I don't know how many Alderman went, Alderman person went, the mayor was there, but ain't no one mentioned it. I think one of y'all would have mentioned it. It deploys that, you know? So with that said, I want to thank you for your service and continue to do work. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
I have you recognized.
Alderman, when?
This way? Let me say, Mr. Taylor, on July 2nd, during our recess meeting, the matter involving the mobile home being placed on Long Street, I will be placing that on our agenda again. And I'm asking the community to come out and show us support. I cannot tell you the number of calls that I received praising myself, Alderman Carver, and Alderman Walker as it related to that mobile home because we had done that months ago. So again, thank you so much, and that is a word that you live in. And again, it will be on the agenda. I will be asking Alderman Carver and Alderman Walker to join me again, and hopefully someone else will raise their hand, or two someone will raise their hands. Thank you so much, and I do for it this time.
Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Saying none? The next matter on your agenda is the consideration of a resolution declaring the intention of Starkville Board of Alderman to support industrial and other economic development projects approved and recommended by the Golden Triangle Development Link and Related Management. Mr. Deason is going to make a presentation prior to board discussion.
Thank you, very good. What you have in front of you is a resolution. First item is that you have concurred with the legal foundation to cease and desist all the dominant developments regardless of the information. Most of you should be aware by now of the cultural, possible cultural conditions that existed on potential pieces of property, and that the risk associated that would add is greater than what we need necessary. We didn't want to use taxpayer funds at that risk level. So I'm asking you to concur with our decision to move forward. Secondly, I'm asking you to commit to efforts, if you're recognizing, to commit to efforts to identify industrial or other economic development projects and to move forward. This way that we know that we're all still on the same board, we're still on the board together. And then the last item, I don't want to make sure, I want to make sure that you guys are not confused by it. This is not the notice of intent to issue bonds. This is just a notice to let you know that we'll be coming back in the future with the intent of the bonds themselves. Because if you remember, there's a twenty-four or two-year period that those bonds are good for. Typically about two months before, twenty-two months, you have to come back in and you have to get that notice of intent lined back up again. So this is just to put you on notice and let you know that we will be back in the future, probably within the next month, month and a half.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Deason? Any questions or comments, members of the board? Mr. Deason, discussion on the matter. Alderman, when?
Mr. Deason, do you have any cataloguing things you might be coming back with? What we're talking about is we're trying to make sure that we get the county and the city on the exact same schedule. Because what happened the first time we came out of the box, the city was on one schedule, the county was on the other. So as soon as possible, all the, we're going to come back forward. I'm probably not within the next month, but probably within the next six weeks.
Further discussion? Alderman, what, so coming back in the next six weeks, that'll, you're willing to extend that two-year window? Is that correct?
That is correct. It's my, it's my understanding that you're not extending it. You have to go through the process.
Or you're opening up a new year.
You have to go through the whole.
What about the, that's correct. So opening up a new two-year window?
That is correct.
And just like before, that whether or not the board ultimately decides to issue those bonds will be a case-by-case basis?
That is correct. This is no different than we're doing in Clay County and Loudoun County. Sometimes you use that intent and other times you don't. It's our intention, obviously, to continue to search for a product here, put something in use that's a product. Because today, we don't have a product in Starkville. We're seeing a lot of industrial activity in the GTR. I've seen a lot of retail activity in the GTR. Most of the retail activity is in, to be all can, industrial activity is another to cancel, do like a product.
Mayor, you may. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything we need to do to cut off the previous resolution of the program that would just, uh, end?
It automatically expires in September. So the board doesn't have to take definitive action to get out of that. It will expire.
Prior to issuing a new resolution, is there any legal reason we would want to cancel the existing resolution on the board pre-September?
The word housekeeping comes to mind. It would be a clean-up, the way the board, but there is specific legal reasons to do it other than just making it a little clearer and needed that the new resolution went towards the new time period and new projects opposed to the old project.
Yeah, it is not the least important, I would imagine, to have ten million city bonds.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the resolution declaring the intention of the board of Alderman to see Starkville Mississippi to support industrial, other economic development projects approved and recommended by the Golden Triangle Link and Related Management. Motion to amend Alderman to approve a resolution declaring the intention of four of Alderman's city of Starkville, Mississippi to support industrial and other economic development projects approved and recommended by the Golden Triangle Link and Related Management. Alderman, this motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded, Alderman, when? Alderman, you want to speak on the air? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussions saying none? Alderman, favor, please signify by raising your hand. Alderman opposed, please signify by raising your hand. Five in favor with one against. That's a good deal. The next matter you have before you is a request for approval of the claims document. Motion has been made, Alderman, when to approve of the city Starkville claims document. All departments included, the legislature department has made big, 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 we are any September thirty, twenty, twenty, to add for Alderman, when? Is that the motion? Do I hear second?
Clear.
Motion for the second is Alderman, made it, Alderman, when? Do you want to speak on the air?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? Alderman, favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alderman opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
All right, I have five in favor with Perkins against. Motion clearly passes. The, that concludes the open session matters on your agenda. A motion to go into closed session to determine whether there's need for a second session. Motion to amend Alderman to go into closed session to determine whether there's need for a second. Alderman, this motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear second? The second, Alderman Little, Alderman, you want to speak on the air?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? Alderman, favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alderman opposed, please signify by saying nay. Message clearly passes. Time on the public to make any preferences as the board can get closed session deliberation.